All right, welcome back. I will go ahead and orient us so that we can get started. Good afternoon. It is after lunch on February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. Um, I'm Nicole Kinsey, presiding hearing officer for the administrative hearings office. We are picking up um the afternoon portion of our hearing with respect to the proposed sites reservoir project. We left off with cross examination of the authorities panel five. And I believe Mr. Bushers has some remaining questions for the panel, and then we'll move on to anyone else who has questions. Um, so if we can, I'll look to my team, if we can please bring up um. Sounds like Mr. Bush's questions were going to be for Dr. Winslow.
That's correct.
There we go. And with that, I will hand things over to you, Mr. Buscher.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Dr. Winslow. I've just got a few questions for you, and if we could pull up um sites four oh seven, uh, Dr. Winslow Winslow's written rebuttal testimony. And if we go to the top of page two and look at paragraph two, um. I just want to make sure I understand the scope of your work for this portion of the proceeding, Dr. Winslow. Um, is the only change that was made to the modeling in your prior testimony, the addition of the temperature change um that occurs between the point of diversion and the point where the water enters the reservoir?
That's correct. We took into account both diversion points in the analysis, Red Bluff and Hamilton City.
Thank you. And so the analysis of the temperatures in the outflow canals and the use of the blending tool remains identical, just with the different input that you updated. Is that correct?
The sites contribution, release waters from sites, that contribution to the blending tool is the only update.
Doctor, uh, your, your audio was not as clear as it was before. Um, I'm not sure why, but um. I I didn't catch the end of your statement um. Contribution too, and then I couldn't hear the last part. It was a little bit um fuzzy, I guess.
Here. The sites temperature releases are an input to the temperature blending tool. And that was the only change made to the temperature blending tool for this analysis.
Thank you. And if we could go to page three and look at table one. What is the travel distance in miles, do you know? Between the points of diversion and where it enters the reservoir?
Yeah, sixty six miles for one of them. It's the TCC canal from Red Love to sites is sixty six miles. And the Glen Calusa main canal is forty one miles of travel time between the Sacramento River and sites.
And is the degree per mile constant across a constant increase across all of those sixty six and forty? I missed the number forty odd miles?
It was applied as a constant.
And am I correct in understanding that the analysis for July and August wasn't done because there's no proposed diversions in those months?
That's correct. It's not that it wasn't done. There was no, there's no change necessary because there's no inflow those months.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that clarification. And do you have a sense of the travel time to go those forty odd or sixty six miles?
I do not. I think that would vary with flow. Um, those canals are very efficient. They're generally straight, smooth canals. They're not like rivers. So the travel time in the canals is likely faster than a comparable travel time for a same distance in a river.
And does the travel time impact the amount of warming that occurs per mile?
Yes, and I think these are averages taken from measurements in the Sacramento River. That's how this table was developed. But yes, the travel time, obviously, the the mechanism for warming is is meteorological influences. So the longer you have subject to that influence, then the more the temperature would change.
And so for the May results, for example, that point zero nine degrees per mile is an average of a range, and there were some mays where the water moved slower and warmed more, and some mays where it moved faster and warmed less?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, just not my, not even my dog.
Uh, can we go down to paragraph ten, please, on page four? Am I right in understanding this, Dr. Winslow, that your opinion is that because of the sixty five degree temperature target for releases, there is very little impact on the release temperature from the inflow temperature?
That's correct. You're, we're asking the model to figure out how to release water at sixty five, and it splits that between the surface and a deeper uh intake option. And so if there's a slight change in the reservoir dynamics, because the inflow temperature is slightly different, there it just ends up being a slight difference in the distribution of where it's pulling water, but it can still meet that sixty five. So because we've applied that as a target release, the model was still able to do that, even though we updated the inflow temperatures.
And if we go to page seven and look at figure two, is it? And if we looked at the um what you described as a tail on the right side of the graph showing warmer releases, um, are those at times where right? The model simply cannot release water at sixty five degrees due to how much water is in the reservoir or what intake levels are available?
Not necessarily. It could be um, a month where it's releasing you know, slightly warmer water. It could be a winter time month where it doesn't pull water from deep. Um, but it could also be a period where the the different dynamics of the reservoir have changed the vertical profile of temperature. And now our surface, say our surface um our, our near surface intake option, which may be, say, thirty feet below the surface, that is slightly warmer than it was previously. So the Epilimnian might be warmer in that case. And so it, it's grabbing, it's grabbing warmer water.
Does the model then just based on the depth of the various intake points, not the temperature of the water at those depths?
Well, you have to think that, that the intake it has available is a function of the, of the water surface. So it's, it's not correct to say it's grabbing surface water all the time. It's really grabbing water from the upper intake, which may be not reflective of surface water conditions because of the vertical profile and temperature. So um, we didn't look yet at the details on when, when these tails occur in terms of individual months. Um, but I did look at the temperature profiles, and I believe I put that in the testimony to show that the temperature profile in, say, the summer can be can swing both ways with the change we made. It might actually be slightly warm. It might be warmer at depth or cooler at depth. That's figure eight we might get to.
Okay.
And so those tail ends are are just upsets of the natural thermal regime based on our simplified assumptions of the, of the reservoir operations and what levels we're allowed to pull water from.
Okay, thank you. Does the I don't know, lat twenty to eighty twentieth to eightieth percentile range in figure two depend on sites reservoir being stratified thermally?
Yes, because that twenty to eighty percent is, is more than half the year, and that's the time, that's roughly half the time when we're asking it to release a certain temperature. So because it's stratified, it can release warmer water from the top, blend it with colder water from the bottom and meet the sixty five. We know that the surface water temperatures will exceed the sixty five in the summer, so we can't just grab surface temperature. We have to blend it with with deeper water.
And if there is less differential in temperature between the, you know, near surface water and the deeper water, that blending becomes less effective. Fair?
Yes, if the reservoir is well, more well mixed, it's harder to we, it's, it's, that, that's, that is true. Sometimes we, we can't meet the temperature target because the reservoir is well mixed. Generally, when the resin, when the volumes are very low or in the winter time conditions. And we don't have the flexibility of pulling different temperatures. To say in the winter, we don't have the temperature target in place, though.
And it, is it correct then that is, is the water in the reservoir um generally greater than sixty five degrees and that you cool it by using blending from deeper portions?
I wouldn't say the water in the reservoir. I would say the surface water seasonally warms above sixty five. And if we want a sixty five target, we have, we generally have to take some water from deeper to blend with the, with the warmer surface water.
Okay. And absent that ability to blend or the thermal stratification of the reservoir, the releases would generally be warmer than sixty five degrees?
Releases in the summer, if we were only allowed to pull from the surface, generally would be higher than sixty five.
How fixed is the sixty five degree directive for blending water in the releases?
It's a constant in the model, but it's just meant to be a kind of a feasibility study. Could we release water at this temperature? And the model said, yes. We could, we could change that numeric setting in the model to any, any value and see what fraction of time the model could release that. But it's a it was guidance given to us by the project team, and that's what we modeled.
And have you modeled any cooler target release temperatures than sixty five degrees?
Have not.
Excuse me. Have you analyzed how often actual operations would be consistent with the sixty five degree temperature target, given competing interests or concerns about right, where water should or should not be released from based on, you know, pollutants or other constituents beyond temperature?
We did some initial testing to look at isolating the upper portion of the water column for habs, basically saying that we don't want to pull from the upper port if the port is within thirty feet of the water surface. So basically saying you have to pull from the second available port and, and to see how different that would be. Um, I don't have that stuff prepared in front of me. That wasn't the, the point of this testimony, but we did look at that.
And do you recall whether that has a material impact on the ability to meet the sixty five degree target?
My recollection is that it was, it was slightly harder to meet because um larger portions of the year, you have a very cold the, the reservoir is relatively cold at depth. Um, so we would be, we would be releasing water well below the sixty five during portions of the year if we couldn't pull the warmer surface water to blend to meet sixty five. And that sixty five was a cap. So the wa, the, the model would release water, but it might be releasing, you know, sixty or fifty eight degree water if we didn't have access to that upper port.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have for you, Dr. Winslow. Thank you very much for your time, and Ms. Huber, thank you for your time and patience with me this morning as well.
Thank you, Mr. Buscher. I will look to the other representatives of the coordinating NGOs. Let me change my view here.
Uh, I, this is Mr. Mooney. I don't, I don't have any questions.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Buscher covered everything.
Was thorough. Uh, I don't.
And this is Mr. Shuets, and I don't have anything either. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. With that, I will look to um, Mr., well, are there any representatives from the tribal parties who have questions? All right, then, Mr. Reese, do you have questions?
I do not have questions for this witness.
All right. Or witnesses, any of them.
Witnesses, this panel, that was very thorough.
And Ms. Mizer.
Good afternoon. I just have a few questions uh for this panel.
Great, thank you.
Um, good afternoon, Ms. Huber. I think my questions are primarily for you. Um, I represent San Joaquin County. And obviously, we're very concerned about any increases in habs in the Delta. Um, my questions, um, I pertain to your mention of the Yolo bypass in your testimony, um, which you mentioned in paragraphs fifty four and seventy. Um, and I guess, um, Ms. Mullen, maybe just to make it easier for Ms. Huber, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the testimony, uh, sites three, three, seven. Um, and to go to paragraph fifty four first. And um, that's on page nineteen. So just in relation to this paragraph, Ms. Huber, um, this but this paragraph focuses on the ability to release water selectively from the inlet and outlet tower, right?
Yes.
And then um, the impacts conclusion in sorry to skip around here, Ms. Mullen, back on paragraph twenty five. And then, um, that relates to the flow dilution of harmful algal blooms or habs in the Sacramento River, correct?
Yes.
And um, just to review, um, what are the peak summer habs months?
Uh, well, different people will say different things, but approximately July through October.
Okay, and um, are you aware of a plan for the site's reservoir to release a long term average of forty thousand acre feet of water per year from August to October into the Yolo bypass to provide benefits to Delta Smelt as part of its proposition one grant?
Uh, I'm, I'm aware of the plan to release water to the Yolo bypass, yes.
And in addition to the Sacramento River releases that your testimony primarily discusses, the water released to the Yolo bypass could potentially contain habs as well, right?
I'd no more than what? Yeah. Uh, yes, but like I stated previously, I don't think they would be high concentrations.
And are you aware that the releases to the Yolo bypass would travel through the Calusa Basin drain to the Knights Landing Ridge Cut and then to the Yolo bypass to the Delta?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so in looking at your testimony, um, did you analyze whether there could be project related habs increases in locations such as Knights Landing Ridge Cut?
It's, sorry, in locations.
Um, such as Knights Landing Ridge Cut?
In the ridge cut itself, which is correct. Um, uh, well, we considered the available data for um cyanobacteria in inclusive basin drain and yellow bypass, and I will say it is limited. Um, I don't recall that there was any data specifically for a nice landing ridge cut. Pretty short section. Um.
And was there any analysis regarding um habs increases in habs from the project at Wallace Weir?
Um, Wallace Weir is basically in the bypass. Um, so I, I would say there's, that there are multiple aspects of this to consider. Um, one is that occasionally maybe cyanobacteria or cyanotoxins would be coming out of sites reservoir uh, at low concentrations. Now, I guess we discussed that enough. Um, I don't know to what degree that would be different from what already might occur in the yellow bypass. Um, in my prior testimony, um, I suggested that or indicated that the flow from sites going into the Yolo bypass for August through October um would increase flow and velocity through the Tulley Canal and Toad Rain, which could make the habitat less suitable for habs in the yellow bypass.
Um, thinking about your analysis in your testimony about the dilution of in the Sacramento River, would there be a similar amount of dilution available in a location in the Yolo bypass?
Uh, no, there could be a little bit of dilution, but it would not be like the dilution in the Sacramento River.
And did you look at residence time? Um, in the Yolo bypass?
Um, hmm. No, but I think residence time of water in the bypass would go down uh, when sites waters move through those two canals. There would be more flow.
But that's not included in your testimony.
Uh.
Argument.
I think, go ahead, Ms. Huber, if you would please clarify.
Uh, yeah, so the testimony, the prior testimony, not this testimony, it just describes that more flow means higher velocities, which means less travel time, but there is no estimate of the travel times.
Then, um, without information regarding the level of harmful algal blooms already in locations in the Yolo bypass, um, is it fair to say that your testimony doesn't speak to the issue of um formation of habs in the Yolo bypass from sites releases?
Um, my testimony speaks to cyanobacteria and cyanotoxins insights reservoir, the controls of those um constituents. Um, why I think that the releases of those constituents will be relatively low. Um, but it, if you probably could see from looking at the rebuttal testimony that the focus is on the Sacramento River and the Delta, uh, because those were the, the primary um, concerns raised by protesters.
There was, however, um, the Save California Salmon, um, which was SCS eight, does discuss temperature concerns in the Yolo bypass, though, correct?
Um, uh, yes, I wasn't addressing temperature um, in, well, in this rebuttal testimony. Uh, I think in general, the water released from sites reservoir will be cooler than what is in the yellow bypass. And um, yeah, moving more water through the bypass will uh, prevent water from just sitting in the sun.
Is there anywhere I should look for where that conclusion is in your testimony?
Um, there's, there's some discussion of this in chapter six. I, I do have to like say that the water released from sites reservoir will be cooler than what is in uh, exclusive basin drain, but there is a long travel time. So like by the time you get to the southern end of the yellow bypass, possibly it will have warmed up to equilibrium values. Um, I'd be the same as what it is under existing conditions. Um. Yeah, there was no temperature modeling of the yellow bypass. It, it's a complicated area to model.
No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mizer. Uh, Mr. King, do you have questions for these witnesses?
Yes, I have a few questions for Ms. Saber. Thank you. Um, so Ms. Saber, uh, did you um, hear uh, Dr. Winslow say that um the distance between Sac, on the Sac, the Glen Clusa inlet on the Sacramento River and the sites TRR, maybe approximately forty miles?
Uh, yes.
Are you aware that that's an earthen um conveyance structure?
Yes.
And are you aware that, that um adjacent to that earthen structure is many rice fields and different agricultural, uh, both, both wildlife refuges, but uh, land use for both agriculture and uh, wildlife habitat?
Uh, yeah, I don't know how, how close, but yes, okay.
Okay, and, and is it possible that, um, phosphates and, um, uh, well, while, while foul, a waterfall feces and nitrogen could actually, uh, eh, um, be conveyed by, be conveyed by that structure? By the G C C I D structure?
Objection lacks foundation and relevance.
What is, uh, what is the connection, Mr. King, to the habs related?
Um, just said it, it could be a source of, um, nitrogen phosphate for the reservoir, just drainage of waterfall habitat and agricultural fields and intermixing of groundwater.
Uh. Ms. Huber, if you have an opinion, please.
Yeah, okay, my opinion is it would not be a major contributor because basically the, the canal, even though it's dirt lined, is blocking overland flow.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. So then my other question is, Ms. Huber, disregard, is regarding the, um, um, the fluvial geomorphy, the morphology of the Cloosa Basin drain, where the proposed intersection between Dunagan, uh, pipeline and the Cloosa Basin drain is, are you aware of the, um, paper by, um, Andrew Gray and Gregory Pasternak called um, Cloosa Basin Drainage Area Fluvial Sediments?
Sir, 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 I'm sorry, that was Greg Ray Passina?
Um, sorry, it's Andrew Gray, G R A Y, and Gregory Pasternak, P A S T E R N A C K. Two thousand sixteen. And the title of the paper is Cloosa Basin Drainage Area Fluvial Sediments, semicolon Dynamics, Environmental Impacts, and Recommendations for Future Modeling of the Cloosa Basin Suspended Sediment Project. Uh, are you aware of that paper, Ms. Huber?
You know, I think I might have seen it. I have to say that I, um. Was not heavily involved with the fluvio-geomorphological chapter, which was chapter seven. In F E I R, yes.
Were you aware that there's approximately thirteen, thirteen miles between Bird Creek, um. The proposed Dunagan pipeline intersection and Baltimore Dam?
Uh, I know there's some distance, I don't, I'll believe you.
Are, are, are you aware that that for most of that area, the, the areas based, the elevation is basically flat?
Um, yes, I, I've heard that.
Okay, and, and then does that lack of grade continue, concern you regarding, um, habs and syno vector and all the, the issues as far as water flows and backing up the water? Does that concern you?
Well.
My last question, if you allow it, but.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ferguson, did you have an objection? I just couldn't hear.
Oh, I just said it's vague or. Yeah.
Let me ask it this way, Ms. Huber, in general, um. Well, I won't say in general, with respect to the Calusa Basin drain. Do you have an opinion about whether the the gradient or lack of gradient would affect the likelihood of if any of habs occurring?
Um, I, I have a couple of thoughts. One is although there's not a lot of data now, there's some indication that habs don't form in exclusive basin drain, perhaps because of tritinity. Um, when the site's water is emptied into exclusive basin drain. It won't just sit there, it's gonna have, it'll start flowing out. Um, so even though the, the top of the water might be flat, the water will be flowing. Um, so I, I don't think that 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 backwater effect will make a difference.
Right, well, that's all my questions. Thank you for the, for your time, Ms. Huber, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. I believe with that, we've completed cross-examination of this panel, and I will turn to Mr. Ferguson. Do you have any redirect for the witnesses?
I do not.
Great, thank you. Then with that, um, I want to thank all of the witnesses for joining us this morning and part of this afternoon. Thank you very much for your time and your testimony, and you are excused.
Thank you.
I believe to wrap us up, as I understand, we do not have anyone else on the calendar for today. And I believe tomorrow with the intent is to start with Mr. Miller, uh, if I have that right, at nine AM. And then we would break, assuming we, we complete that, um, process and then hear from Mr. Goshi at one PM. And then at, once we were complete with Mr. Goshi, we would break for the, for the day, and then you would reconvene on March fourth. With that layout, are there any other procedural issues or any comments on? Um. Where we go from here? Mr. King.
Uh, yes, thank you. So, um, I would appreciate it if I could, uh, be, um, be able to present, um, the week after next, and if that's possible, uh.
That, that my intent is that we would hear from you, Mr. King, the not the first week of March, but the following, where we, let me, let me.
Yes, thank you.
Either the tenth, eleventh, or twelfth.
Perfect, thank you. And then, um, so I, I will try to listen in on, uh, um, tomorrow, but I don't expect to be, um, have any questions, so, so, um, and I will probably I'm not sure how much activity I'll be in this next week because of personal scheduling, but, uh, not that that matters that much for a lot of this, but, um, I just appreciate the opportunity to, um, all, all that, that I don't have to present next week. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Hitchens.
Yes, thank you. Hearing Officer Kenzie, just a, a quick clarification, I, I think your directive last week was for the protesters to provide their order of witnesses by the end of the day today. I was a little confused this morning from, uh, Mr. Schut's comment that they may not be meeting till Friday to resolve that, but, um, I just wanted to confirm whether the protesters are on track to provide that information uh, by today.
So, uh. I was gonna ask in terms of trying to answer that question, I mean, the dates changed and then we moved faster than we expected, and so we had planned out an order starting later. Um, but do we have an estimate for cross-examination of the, uh, county witnesses so that we have a sense of when their portion of the rebuttal would be complete and our witnesses would begin? Because that's going to impact the order of people, um.
Well, and so, and I'm sorry to in, interrupt, we could only need to know from the one we, because I think it makes sense to have your witnesses go as a block. So, and now I'm looking back, which is, um, your one witness who will be only available on, will not be available until the fifth, so that's that is the witness who is, will affect the, the timing, right?
That was for Mr. Ruiz, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes, so.
I was trying to get the name of the witness, which I.
Oh, Dr. Michelle Miles Leinfielder.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so I have, uh, uh, her ready to go the morning of the fifth. Um, and we have, uh, uh, Greg Wilson and Tom Burke are ready to go the morning of the fourth after we complete panel five.
Great, that's sound, that fits my understanding of the order of things. And thank you, Mr. Reese. And then, Mr. Hitchens, do you, I don't know if you have this at this time, but because we just reordered things, but do you have an estimate of um, cross for Dr. Miles Leinfielder?
Uh, we don't have that yet, um, but we could we can, uh, confer internally here and try to get that out by the end of the day as well, at least our best estimate at this point. You have an estimate for, uh, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Burke? I, I think it's the same answer, Dean. Okay. Uh, but we will, we will endeavor to get, um, an estimate out by the end of the day. Very good.
Thank you.
So it sounds, it, it sounds as though then, um, we have our panel five on the wildlife. Uh. Impacts that'll start first thing on Monday. It sounded like the cross for them in total could have, could conclude maybe even by the break or shortly after in the morning. Uh, and then we would move on to the two South Delta parties witnesses. Um, we can give our cross estimates on that, but it sounds like there might be even time at the end of the afternoon on, on Tuesday, uh, for possibly NGO witnesses if they're available.
I don't think, well, I don't, I, I don't think it makes sense to break up the, the South Delta witnesses, uh, so what I had intended was that it would call, call it the end of the day. If you've earned yourself an early day, you earn yourself an early day. And then, uh, start up in the morning with, with Dr. Miles Leinfielder.
Just clarification, we're talking, clarification, we're talking Tuesday, Wednesday, not Monday, Tuesday, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So then we will, um, plan to start the afternoon of the fifth. Um, at the conclusion of Dr. Leinfielder's testimony, um.
Which, we don't have an estimate of time, so it could be the morning of the fifth.
Yeah, fair enough, um. And we will do our schedule juggling and try to get an order of witnesses out to the group, um, this afternoon, or certainly by tomorrow.
Okay. That would be that's helpful, and I know we, we, we changed the schedule to some extent today, so I realize that. But that is there some, so my intent, I'm going to ask the team, um. On my end to update our webpage, the site's reservoir webpage with this general order, um. So that we're talking about today, so that will be, I'm, I'm not gonna, I wanted something in writing, but that may be the best way indicating that we will um, hear from the South Delta Party witnesses first, and then move on to the, um, coordinating NGO witnesses. And then once we have some sense of the order of those witnesses, I mean, it's subject to change, I realize sometimes we have to juggle these things. Uh, we will get those out as well. And posted. Are there other questions or issues before we break? All right, then I will see you at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, and we are adjourned for the day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.